All right, thanks. Welcome, everybody. See Mel and Janet, can you hear us? Are you there? Yes, I can't see, I can't see or hear them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I hear you Janet. No, no will be along. So we had. We had a meeting last. The Monday, the. Oh, I forget what it was. Let's see, twelve, twelve, right? And we had not that many people there. Mari, Mary. Me. Cindy, I think Bill. But we didn't have a quorum, so. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve, especially Mary and Mari, since you were here at both of those? Move to approve those minutes? Is that how it works? We didn't have a quorum. Do we still have to approve the minutes? Is that's right?
I don't think so.
No.
It can approve them. It's probably good form.
Okay. We certainly need to approve the ones from.
It can't hurt.
I didn't see the minutes.
Yeah, I don't know if we saw, if we took minutes. I only could hear like half the meeting. I was so out of service, so I'm not going to participate at all.
Right.
abstained.
Yeah, so it was, we, we need to, we never got to approve November's minutes. Which we had a lot of people here for that one.
I, I moved to approve November's minutes.
Awesome. Any second, any seconds?
Second, second.
Mary, Pam, okay, so let me, I got, sorry, I gotta write stuff down here, so. Mary, Pam, or no Pam, Mary. And then, does anybody want to move to approve, or did any people not see the minutes? Mari, you said you didn't. You didn't see him? All right, well, we can wait and do that another time. Next thing. Let's see. What we have. I'm sorry, I'm still ready. All right, so I have on my agenda next. Is waste reduction. And let's see who, Mari, you want to start us off with that? How we're doing, and then we also have. Pam on the. On the compost, I'm not, sorry, we're not supposed to call it composting, food scraps. And then. Yeah, food, I've got food scraps, food rescue. And recycling drive updates. Those are the three things I've got under waste reduction. So if anybody wants to just kick one of those off. Feel free.
Yeah, I have something, Mari, if you don't.
Yeah, you can go first, sure, I don't have much.
Well, for the recycling drive. I had reached out to Connecticut DEP. When I noticed that I was getting charged a nickel for my pineapple juice.
Oh.
So the changes went into effect January first. So a lot of bottles and cans that know, that used to not have a deposit now have a deposit. Okay. What's tricky is not all the labeling has caught up. So the bottle of pineapple juice I bought. Doesn't have Connecticut on it. So it's gonna be tricky getting monies for those things.
Yeah, how do you get your money back? Can you bring, does it? Does it scan to get the five cents?
I don't know yet. So I was just thinking of my glass, like those.
Nice.
Part of my regiment with this, the jaw surgery was to drink a lot of pineapple juice. Won't go into why. But I was just bringing the glass to the transfer station, and then I saw on my receipt the other day, it was nickel for every bottle I bought. But there's nothing on. On it that says that. That's Connecticut. Deposit. So I reached out to, and I'll tell you in a second, because I want to pull up the email I got. Hold on a second. I asked her about first. If she had an updated. Some sort of a. A document that we could share with our constituents about what now qualifies, and she sent me something. Which I'd like to share if possible. So do you mind if I do that?
Sure. Bring it in.
Do y'all see that recycling makes sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So this is what they have put together at the DEP. These are things that now are eligible, and you'll be charged the nickel for. If you buy them anywhere. So all these things will start to be. Deposit. Ergo, you know, anything at the recycling ride, they should be able to. To take these things. Excuse me. However. When I asked her about. You know, what do you do when? The bottles, the labeling hasn't caught up. It was very loosey goosey, so I don't know what, in terms of the. The, the merchant ban, what they're going to be able to collect, but. There's going to be a catch-up period for that, I guess. She said that the labeling has a grace period for the governor, so bottles that are on shelf. In a supermarket, there's a grace period for those. But she thinks that. The products that don't have. Connecticut on them, folks will bring them to customer service desks and they will be refunded, which is. I don't know how that's gonna work.
Oh, yeah, that sounds great.
Wow.
I had a different document that my husband printed out for me. Where it was from, oh, gosh, I put it away because I couldn't find the JPEG for it. Anyway, it was a different. Document that looked like this, but it had more details and it had actual labels on it. But it was from some recycling coalition, some company that, that does their own recycling, and I don't feel right using it. But what does everybody think about sharing this with our? Our followers on social or putting it on a website?
Yeah, I think that's good. I mean, I noticed it on one of the. I don't know, sports drinks or something that didn't use to have it, it's, now it says that it's recyclable, but yeah, it'd be good to update people, I think, because it's a big change.
Yeah, I mean, the tea and coffee is new. Sports drink is big. That's a big one. Right, energy drinks, that's a big one. There's a lot of those bottles and cans around the streets. All right, so I'm gonna stop sharing. As, as long as you're okay with that particular document, I'll share it around. But we're gonna get a lot of questions, I think, around what can be dropped off at the recycling, not that that's our event, the bottle and can drive, but.
Yeah.
Probably get questions about it.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, maybe we should just confirm just before Saturday. What they are collecting in case whoever's at the event this week is, is getting questions, but maybe we can print that up and. Have it available if people have questions.
Okay, do you want me, do you have someone that you talked to at the recycling drive, Mari?
Yeah, I do. I can put you in contact with him, or I can reach out and do a group text or something. Why don't I do that?
That's fine. Either way, whatever's easiest, I'm happy to do it too, because I have that lingo that. That. God, what was her name? She's from Connecticut DEP.
Daryl?
Bora Pointeck.
Oh, okay, cool.
Great. Sounds good, thank you.
Did they, Pam, did they happen to say when the, when there would be another meeting? For that, I was trying to look it up on my phone. I thought they recently. Had said something about like another meeting update for the bottle bill.
I didn't ask and she didn't.
Okay.
It wasn't even. I know that everything is going to a dime. Is that June?
That's January twenty-four.
Okay, it's another year before it goes to ten cents. Well, you know, it's interesting, is I was searching for the document that I wanted online. I saw a lot of Facebook groups and other social media groups really upset about the increase. And in certain deposits, but. You know.
Yeah.
Any, any incentive to not throw it out your window is a good incentive.
Yeah, exactly.
Um. I can add about the recycling drive real quick, if, if you're finished, Pam, I don't want to cut short, but, okay. Just for this month, I'm not gonna be there, but we have our Trumbull Sustainable Youth in. April and our new volunteer Beth, I think, covering. Pam and Kevin, if you want to do your usual, I'll pop in and pick up, maybe that would be helpful, but you could check with. April or Brianna. And then I added to the list, a reminder for this month, holiday lights, I thought that was appropriate. While people can obviously take them to the transfer station as well, I, I just like to offer that. And I don't mind being the person to drop them off after. And then. I think Pam, maybe you showed us, there was an inquiry about plastic toys. So we don't list it, because we were really, when we did list it, we weren't getting any participation with Hasbro or Vtech toys, but. I just put a post out there, because we are. Accepted into the collection for those two brands of toys. So we'll see if we get, we get. Participation, we can do it maybe just for this one month. Let's just see how it goes, I guess.
Okay. That's good, I wasn't sure, I knew that there were brands specific that we.
And the brands, I feel like tend to get such a trickle of participation, it's not worth promoting, but just because people might clean out toys after Christmas or holidays, let's just throw it out there and see if we get a few, I can send them back, no big deal. So.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Let's see, the next on my agenda is the food scrap initiative, so I guess back to you Pam on that. I understand that. From your emails and such, that George did visit. Fairfield. And I guess they're in more of a. They're not as far along with their system, right?
It just started. So, I mean, I know Fairfield is close.
Right.
And I mentioned, yeah, and I mentioned to George in an email that Norwalk and Darien. Have been at it longer. And certainly, I mean, I'm, I'm not suggesting anybody drive to Scarsdale, but Scarsdale is the, the gold standard and was the original. Team that we spoke to. But I think that we have possibly some movement. I don't. Want to get my hopes up, but it sounds like George is interested in possibly piloting something soon.
Yeah.
But, and then this morning, as I was reading the Sustainable Connecticut newsletter, I noticed there was an article about grants for recycling. And in that list of things that you can get a grant for was food scrap. And it's a lot of money, it's like two hundred fifty thousand dollars that they have in the kitty for this, so, and I think it's only. I'm gonna get this one, I think, seven awards, so it's a lot of money to a municipality if they can get something off the ground or a grant.
Yeah, somebody in East Connecticut got a big grant too. Was that from the EPA, the state? I thought it was from the state. Remember what town that was out in East, like down?
Stonington.
Yeah, I think it was Stonington, wasn't it?
Well, I mean, reality is, we're gonna start seeing this more and more, because it's, it's just, it's a huge amount. And depending on where you get your facts from, it's anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five percent of your.
Right.
Is food waste. You're all, I'm also starting to see articles about schools. And food wasted schools. And I know that nobody in Trumbull really wants to talk about it yet, but I think. That will become a reality too, because there's a lot of food wasted schools.
Yeah.
So if you can get schools on board, you can take a lot of waste out of the street.
And the thing with the organics is it has negative BTU value, you know, it doesn't incinerate, it just ends up sucking up more fuel to get rid of it, so it's a terrible thing. For our particular waste. Disposal, solid waste disposal in this state particularly.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that we'll ever go to pay-as-you throw in, in the state. But. If people did, they'd know how much was in their trash bins, you know, weighing down because of food scrap, so.
So did, go ahead, Mari.
Oh, I, sorry, I had to step out, April was just picking up something. So I, I don't know if you already just said this, but. Did we talk about the deposit money going towards the food scrap collection? Because that's actually what is funding it at the schools, from what I understand. West Hartford is using the money to fund. The food scrap collection at schools, so that's why we're seeing, I think, one of the reasons we're seeing some of these. So many of these programs between the Connecticut deep grants that are going out, as well as people utilizing their bottle funding, like, it's my understanding Fairfield using that funding for their. Their food scrap at the transfer station, so I'm just curious, what I missed, or if that's something we want to.
George is aware of the amount of money that has come in from the NIPS, I think, the end of, was it November?
Yeah, came in, it's, it's April and, April, April and November.
So it's thousands. That have come in, that we can certainly apply the, the NIP monies to. To help as well. I mean, we, what we saw from. Scarsdale was that the, I think they're upfront with something like twelve grand, all told, and that included the home bins that they were selling back to customers at cost. And their bins at, at the transfer stations, they have two transfer stations, I think. And their signage, so. I think, you know, it's not that big a deal in terms of the upfront cost.
I'd, I'd love to see if we can get, I mean, there's, if you see, there's so many towns that are piloting right now. It would be great if we could try a pilot first, see how it goes, how it works, and what, what can we get for free? Before using, you know, any of the funds we have to. But, you know.
Somebody's gotta haul it, right? So that's, that's gonna be a cost no matter what.
Yeah, I don't know what's in the, again, I was on that with the food waste for the schools. This afternoon with CCSMM. And nobody had a cost at this point because of COVID. And that's what I said, you know, if we could see it's a break even. Or a reduction, that would be wonderful. So I don't, I don't know, unfortunately, they had, they had Greenwich. They were talking about Fairfield, they're new, just starting, Essex is going into their second year, Westport, they have all their schools. Roatton in Norwalk, so they, you know, a few different things, but. Of interest is Westport, you probably noticed this, Mari, they are part of the food rescue. And so that, so which is, because they, you know, you see all this food, if it's not going to be taken by other kids in school, you know, what are you doing with it? And so they're, they're participating in that, which is another kind of interesting option for, you know, going perhaps to, you know, either Bridgeport or, you know, or in Trumbull Food Pantry.
We need to dive into that if you want, I'm sorry. I was just gonna mention, the high school is, a couple of the students are revisiting food rescue there from a different perspective, not the cafeteria provided foods, but maybe student provided foods that they can collect. So they're, they've already met with. Haley at Food Rescue, and then she pointed them to me, so. While we got maybe a no from. State-funded food, which I guess there's a statute that bypasses that, so that excuse of, or an obstacle is not actually legal. To say we can't donate food that's federally funded, so anyway, so that might come, move forward at the high school, that was just one of my updates, I wanted to throw it in there.
And for the notes, Kevin, it would be probably good to note that this all kind of came up again recently, because curbside compost dropped Trumbull. They couldn't make the numbers work, they only had fifteen to twenty households. So curbside asked their customers to reach out to George, so George started to get emails and looked us into at least one of them, so.
I'd still love to see if George would contact the. Whoever the managers are at the apartments. To see if, you know, the, not the right word, not manager, but you know, the. Whatever it's called, the apartment manager. But, no, of the, of, of, I don't know, the building management company, whoever does that. It would be, it's, you know, seeing at such a small amount of space that it does take up. That might be, you know, a great opportunity for him. You know, to, to get the apartment people involved, and they've got, you know, they don't, same thing, you don't want that smelly stuff. You know, in your house per se, when you're in this little tiny apartment and can't go out and throw it in your garage, so that might be a good option for them.
Well, the apartments should be, you know, considering their state-of-the-art apartments, what kind of recycling facility they're gonna have, or everything, plastic film, cans, bottles, et cetera.
Do you think we should get, invite George to our next meeting and talk to him, maybe get a list of questions from him for him, maybe a little back and forth beforehand and. Try to get some of this, because it's fast-moving to some degree and sort of up in the air and all different directions.
Well, I, I also wanted to say that I saw the email this morning about the grants that are available. And the, the application date is February fifteenth, I think. And so I reached out to George, I left him a message, I haven't heard back yet. But, and I, I just called him a little while ago, because I, I, I'm home with a sick dog, so.
Yeah.
It's been a little crazy today, but. Just to see, you know, if, if he and Rena can take a look at this and the grants and see if. Are we, are we in the position, like, do you have to be more? Prepared than we are to apply for the grants? Do we have the bandwidth to apply for the grants? Just, just to sort of, you know, make sure we're looking at this as soon as we can. To see if it's a possibility, so. I'll, I'll keep that on my radar and try to follow up on that. But, yeah, I mean, it sounds like, it sounded like his trip to Fairfield was good and, and interesting. And. You know, I, I, I think definitely, you know, see if they'll want to come to a meeting. Sounds like a good idea.
That sounds great.
Or thirteenth is the next one, is so far?
Of. Are you talking about meeting dates?
The next one?
Yeah, we have to decide, we have to decide whether we're gonna be doing this on Tuesdays or Thursdays. Tuesdays and Thursdays at four were the best. Choice that I have, that I got from people by way of the. Doodle that I sent out, so we have to decide, I know. I don't know if you want to skip to that now, or you want to wait until we get.
No, I just, I just wanted, if you were gonna invite George to talk about food scrap initiative. I won't be at the February meeting, so I just wanted to mention that. Not that I need to be, but.
Yes, you do.
Oh, because of what, did you say?
I'm going to Costa Rica.
Oh, nice, which, when are you gonna, when are you gonna be there?
I'm gonna be there for my anniversary, the middle of February.
Until the middle of February?
No, I'm going for five nights, I think it's the eleventh through the seventeenth or something like.
Well, we can just put off our meeting for a week, if that's what, if that's all we have to do. We'll decide, we'll decide that shortly. But congratulations, and Costa Rica is awesome.
Before we go to scheduling, can I just go back to the apartments, because I really, I'm just wondering, like, what kind of guidance or permission we do need, or what? Steps we would want to take, and does anybody want to work on that together? Because I really think that. You know, in the interim, while we're waiting to move forward, like townwide collection for food scraps, I really think. It would be great to reach out, there's more and more apartments, obviously, that have. Come online, and like you said, the plastic film collection, I mean, just, just basically like community outreach and education, I think, would be fantastic, and we have. This, you know. Baseline of knowledge and contacts to put people, I don't know if Nick would be more apt with curbside compost to come out. To five apartments, if it was quantity-wise equivalent of like sixty houses, let's say, right? But does anyone want to work on that? Do we need to like check with Rena or George on like contacts at the apartments, or could we just kind of do that on our own? Anyone have any direction or ideas?
Cindy has to say.
So.
Since we are part of the town, the apartments obviously are private property, but since we are, since, that's the question.
It's probably a good idea to, to run this by Rena. See if, see if they have contacts. For one thing, see if they have contacts, that's gonna help you out. But I, I do think that's a good idea. So I don't know, if someone wants to, to draft an email to Rena and. You can copy me and I'll. Kind of try to. You know. If she has any questions, I'll, you know, hopefully be able to facilitate that a little bit. Does that sound like a good idea, or?
Yeah, I think so, and just let her know kind of our thoughts, and she can provide us feedback or any direction. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think there's any harm in offering outreach and education opportunities for.
Yeah.
Local businesses, you know.
So there's the two apartments, the apart, the mall's not up yet, but there's also the, I can't remember the name of it. The senior living facility.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know how much, how many people there actually cook themselves, but there might, with the number of people in that facility, there might be an opportunity for. Even the, the, the cooking staff, the chefs that are there and things like that. They really, they really are trying to get good PR out, so that might be, you know, kind of an interesting community, you know, aspect from them as well.
Yeah, the congregation, Mary, you mean, or no?
No, the, it's, it's expensive. The what?
The cruise ship on land.
Yes, the cruise ship, the cruise ship on land. I can't remember the name of it, senior living.
I can't either, I, I apologize.
Isn't there an apartment building or condos now on Reservoir?
Yes.
Because I know someone that moved there, but I don't think they're in senior living, so there's another apartment.
No, yeah, those are.
Oakwood, yeah, Oakwood. Reservoir, and then the one, the senior one I'm trying to come up with is on Oakwood as well.
Oakview.
Oakview.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one's pretty. High class.
River Village too, for that matter. I offered to do our, my recycling presentation, ready to go. For residents there with Paulette, so.
River Valley.
River Valley, that's why I'm saying, yeah.
It takes a while, but I eventually get there most of the time.
I was trying to Google. But yeah, I think more, the more places we're able to get, you know, while we're waiting on the town and board event and things like that, if we're able to reach out to other. Organizations that might be interested, I mean, it's, it's frankly, you know, it's kind of a, it's kind of a win-win for them, hopefully, again, if it comes out to, it's not gonna cost them any more money. In hauling fees, but that's still to be determined.
All right, welcome, April. I, I see you, well, I don't see you, but I see your name.
I'm here, I'm in listening.
Good, good. Let's see, we're just finishing, oh, I had one more question on food rescue. Mari, how's that going? As far as, is everybody covered on Mariana's, and are there other places that we should be looking at, or?
That's what I mean, I don't know that we want to keep it on the agenda, I mean, I kind of feel like it's an individual item, if people want to sign up to participate, I guess I want to. Maybe we can just discuss, yeah, it seems like, just to answer your question, there's plenty of rescuers in the Trumbull community, it seems like. So if, for instance, there's a week that I may be signed up for rescue and I have to drop it, they almost immediately get picked up, so.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was wondering.
It's only if we see in those emails we're getting as rescuers ourselves, that we know something, somebody might have dropped a regular one, and then it's available. But it seems like there's sufficient coverage with volunteers, so with that said, do we as a group want to. You know, reach out to see if anybody else is interested in participating, I mean.
Anybody else, you mean in terms of another company that has food?
Correct, any food establishments. With that said, though, you know, I kind of feel like the food rescue has particular guidelines of what they look for, so I wouldn't just like throw it out to anybody, but if there's.
Yeah, I mean.
Anyone on the team that wants to, I can direct you guys, you know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe, is it Haley is her name, who does the food rescue?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, maybe just ask her if, if she would, because they probably have. You know, I don't think they have tentacles everywhere, and so local people like us could be helpful in terms of identifying. But they, pretty, but like you're saying, they probably have guidelines about how to do it, so.
Yeah, I would say if you have a place to just email her the idea, and then if she wants you to go to talk to them, she can give you some more guidance, or. Or she'll just do it herself, that's kind of how I've worked with her in the past.
That sounds good. All right.
Does anyone have ideas? Mary, did you have any more ideas of people we should approach? I know.
Well, like Trumbull Cafe, Canary Bread. Trying to think of what else is over. I mean, there's. The mall gets harder, you gotta go into the mall to get things. But, you know. I said Dunkin' Donuts, because they do breakfast sandwiches and things like that, but hate to get like just a bunch of, like sugary donuts as your, you know.
Yeah, right.
About the guy who owns Parker, who just opened another restaurant where Ovar used to be.
Yeah, they're not open for lunch, though, so that would be dinner only, and which would then be too late, that's what I was trying to think of, like, like breakfast, lunch.
Yeah, that's too bad, we can't get dinner, I mean, dinner is bigger than lunch for.
I mean, there's a chance they would be able to hold it then, till the next day, and then when they open, the rescuer could come, I mean, I'm not.
Yeah, because we got, I went one day. And they just had stuff thrown, remember, I went at Mariana's on a Friday instead of a Thursday, because they put it off for whatever reason, and they just threw it in the freezer. And, you know, it's fine.
And if there's a food rescue at Echo. I'll take it.
Yeah. You want to be the recipient of the donations?
Only five-star restaurants for.
Exactly, and one.
Yeah, well, I can be the filter if you guys want. With food rescue, if we have ideas, we can consolidate a list, and I can report back with Haley to kind of get things moving forward, if you'd like, just to avoid her being bombarded, but.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Good.
Yeah, sure, all right, all right. So I have on my next, anything else under waste reduction that we haven't touched on? Okay. My next item is Mel, one thousand trees for Trumbull. What's, how's that going?
Well. Right now, we're in the. We're waiting to hear back, of course, for, from Dimitri.
You had a meeting with Tim, you said Tim, was it Coughlin? George and Dimitri, was that who met the last? Time or is there a meeting?
Yes, they did, and Pam was, Pam, you were at that meeting, right?
Oh, Pam was there? Good.
Right, Pam? Yes.
Yes, I was there.
So, do, do you want to give feedback on that? So, do, do you wanna give feedback on that, since I was not there?
It's a long time ago, if you like.
It was uh just before Thanksgiving, it was the week before Thanksgiving, yeah.
Well, I think, just in general, we have a very supportive DPW and Parks Rec. Both Dimitri and George are very excited about this program, and the long and short of it is on. That Dimitri liked the idea of starting at Twin Brooks, because they're doing all that work there. And there's a lot of areas that are gonna need trees, and I like that place, because it gets a lot of traffic when there's people walking around, when you're able to go through it. And he said it's gonna be all finished in time for spring.
It's gonna be what, I'm sorry, I missed that.
It's all gonna be finished, cause right now, it's all under construction. But Dimitri promised it'll be done in time for tree planting in the spring. It's a great spot for marketing program as we launch, because it does get a lot of foot traffic every day, especially on the weekends.
There's gonna be signage there, in addition to the trees, there's gonna be signage about it?
We'll make signs, we'll do something with it, either a QR code, or we'll do a sign about, you know, thousand trees for Trumbull, you know. First place, we'll, we'll talk about it in the Trumbull Times, like, we, we should do a real push out to the town, to, to folks, any way we can. With social media, et cetera, to let them know that this is starting, and here's how we're going to start it and how it's going to continue. Um, Dimitri also agreed that his, his department would take care of watering the trees. The, for the first year, so they're taken care of, so we wanna do a site walk at Twin Brooks. And Tim sent an email out to Dimitri to ask what a good day would be, so we're just waiting to hear about that.
Yeah, he's been on vacation, I guess, Dimitri, so um, we're, we're all kind of ready and waiting to jump over to Twin Brooks. Uh, when he says go, so um, yeah, that would be great, and, and we still kind of have uh the thought in our mind that, well, I have it stuck in my mind. That for street trees, it would be really great to go up to the Long Hill Green. Uh, area and um maybe plan with the, the commercial owner up there um to do. Some tree, street tree plantings up there, uh in- included in the same umbrella of the twelve thousand that we, you know, we have. And, you know, probably somebody like Mike Serrata may match wh- what the town puts in or something like that, so um. I would really like to, uh, he actually, while we're on Mike Serrata, he did um give us the thumbs up. For um coming in and replanting his rain gardens, he has two rain gardens up there by Echo, uh, one has signage. Um, and only one of the many plants that they put in there have come up, so.
Is that anywhere in your mail?
Did you lose me?
I lost, we lost your audio.
Oh, can you hear me now?
I, I had you.
Okay.
He's selective.
So um, so that'll be a fun uh project, that's kind of down the lines of the pollinator pathway, which um, you know, we can do some signage there. And um, also, I have a meeting scheduled on January twentieth, I don't have a time yet, but with Rena. To talk about funding for this Thousand Trees for Trumbull uh initiative going forward. Um, because the um, there are, there's some federal uh money, I, I just sent you guys um. Copies of the uh funding for trees in the IRA. Which is the uh Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. Um, this PDF I sent you is from the Sustainable Urban Forest Coalition. And um, this was sent to me by the former New York City Parks Forester um last week. So he said, there's a lot of money out there for uh trees and restoration of trees. So um, we're going to sit down with Rena and, and talk about this on the twentieth. Um, she copied George and Dimitri in on uh our date and, and um. Tim, if Tim can come to, and Pam, so whoever, you know, if we can sit down with Rena, she is the master at getting these grants and writing these grants. So especially a federal grant like this, um, could be challenging, but it's also a lot of money. So um, and I had two more things uh regarding trees. One is um, actually one regarding trees, one regarding pollinator pathway, so I'm in the process right now of writing a grant for work. Um, for the Aspartak Land Trust, we're gonna be partnering on a forestry. Uh, uh, project in Bridgeport, and I think that this method that we're writing the grant for. Would be really cool to do in Trumbull, and it's called a Miyawaki forest. So I don't know if you've ever heard of it, but I would suggest that you, I, I'll send you the video link for it. It was started in Japan, obviously, in nineteen eighty, what they are, are like forest patches. They're concentrated forests that are made in an area, like a circular area, that might be twenty, thirty, forty feet in diameter. And it's a circle of very concentrated tree planting seedlings. And these Miyawaki forests grow faster than traditional forests, they're native trees. But it's just the fact that they are planted so close together, um, and the soil amendments that are used, they just take off in size. They grow faster than trees in regular forests, they clean the air faster, they capture carbon faster, they increase biodiversity. So in other words, the birds and bees and everybody goes to those forests, it's almost like supercharging a forest in a landscape. So what I'm working on this grant for Bridgeport is, we're gonna plot these on school properties in Bridgeport. Superintendent in Bridgeport is like over the moon for this idea, because there are areas of Bridgeport that have like a seven percent tree canopy. Like no tree, and if you can drop these dense trees into an area, get the students involved. And working with some other really cool folks on this project, but as we were just talking about Twin Brooks. Um, you know, since we haven't really met with Dimitri or George since November. This concept of this Miyawaki forest um just kind of emerged, even though it's been around for forty years, don't do it that much in the United States. Um, and I think it would be very cool, because uh to, to do that on a site that has been degraded. Where the trees have been removed or fallen down, or maybe school properties um. And it would be really um cool, because we're gonna be measuring a whole bunch of things, like the air temperature. Uh, in an air, in that area, the um carbon sequestration, we can, using the same formula that. We use in the Conservation Commission, when people take trees down, there's a formula called I Tree that I put down. Oh my gosh, this, let's say this oak is thirty inches in diameter, big old oak. And I can use that I Tree to calculate, like, how much stormwater that one tree manages, how much oxygen it.
Carbon dioxide it takes out, yeah.
Yeah, how much carbon it.
Cooling, cooling effect.
Yeah, so the tool, and so if you have one oak, that's what it, but you multiply it out in a concentrated forest area, like these Miyawaki forests. Um, and you're like supercharging the effect of cooling and climate.
Right.
Uh, it's all about climate, so this is an agricultural forestry grant. But I think if we can get money for it, um, if we started doing more of these in the region, let's say the Paquonic River watershed area. It would manage for, you know, cleaning the water and bringing trees in, so it's just a really cool funky. When I send you the video, you're just gonna like.
It'll be great to pull out, there's some places where there's just massive amounts of invasive, like Russian olives and stuff like that. If we could pull those out and replace them with a, a native Miyawaki forest would be like fantastically.
I mean, they can be as small as like um, you know, ten feet by ten feet. Uh, and they can be planted, which is a hundred square feet, so they can be as small as a hundred square feet and as big as, you know, ten thousand square feet.
So are they aesthetically appealing, or is it, are they, are they meant to?
Whatever trees do you, can you use whatever you want or what?
Yeah, so um native trees, seedlings, um, but native trees. So our, you know, oaks and willows and maples and beeches, and we put little seedlings in. And they're planted much closer than you would imagine is a good idea. Um, and they kind of thrive on each other, but some of the designs that were done in India using this method. Just beautiful, because they would plant, um, so they would allow for like a weaving pathway through them. And they would plant like a ten by ten circle over here, and another ten for circle over here, and another one over there. And within as three years to four years, you've got a really nice young forest. And within twenty to thirty years, you've got a mature forest, whereas it would take a traditional forest, two hundred to three hundred years. To, to provide the ecosystem services that this, these Miyawaki forests would.
Yeah, I just Googled Miyawaki forest images, and there's some cool stuff in there.
Oh, yeah, it's just, I, I don't know why it really hasn't taken up, the only places I found in the United States that are doing it is um Cambridge, Mass. Um, uh, there, there, they did one up there, and then out in California, um, they did one at a vineyard. Um, somewhere, but you think this would be a great opportunity to do in our urban areas. And especially in Bridgeport has the lowest tree canopy.
Yeah.
Too, too bad the mall was already approved for landscaping, you know, along, along uh Main Street.
I'm sorry, Mary, can you repeat?
Oh, I said, it's too bad the mall landscaping, it's too bad you didn't, you didn't, weren't aware of this before for the landscaping along Main Street. Uh, with all the cars and obviously the mall itself still there, and uh, you know, apartment complex parking.
Yeah, but it's, you know, it's the, I guess the beauty is, it's never too late to put these in, cause they don't require a lot of. Land, um, and, you know, it's kind of a concentrated area, so we're gonna do ten of them, between ten and twelve of them in Bridgeport, that's the plan.
It's, that's great.
So, I, I would just love to do, to do this, you know, up the Paquonic River watershed into Trumbull. I think Dimitri would like, really love this, cause it's very cool.
When you drive into Twin Brooks from White Plains Road, over by where that gas station is, that entrance. As you go under the covered bridge and you go around that roundabout to get into the parking lot, just on your right there, is a whole area that was just cleared.
Oh.
Just recently cleared as part of the, whatever they were doing there, that might be an interesting place for one of those forests.
Yeah.
It's just empty now.
Wow, so that's like a, that's a blank slate and.
Right next to, right next to the water.
The cost, well, see there, there you go, I mean, that's, that's almost like a buffer of area, managing stormwater for clean water. But also, it's, it's not expensive, cause these are seedlings, like it is better to start them as little seedlings, they, they grow faster. Um, and you know, Doug Tallamy had said, if you planted an acorn, that oak would grow faster than if you planted a two-inch caliber. A tree with a ball and the burlap, um, so starting them small is really important, so. Um, so yeah, this, this concept just kind of came up, and since we're in this Trees for Trumbull headspace now. Hey, why not?
Yeah.
See if we can drop a couple of forests, Aspartak style, bring some of our forests into the city and see if it works. So um, the, and the last thing I wanted to say was, I got a call from Josh Adams from the Nichols Garden Club, he's the president of the Nichols Garden Club. He's an electrician and a very passionate guy about native gardening. And native plants and biodiversity and sustainability, and um, he wants to relaunch the pollinator pathway. At very least for his, for, for Nichols, but also for the rest of the town. But um, he is such a passionate guy that I, I would love to have, you, you know, get him maybe involved somehow in sustainable. Trumbull, because he's very articulate and um, he's just a jolly, he's, he's just a very positive guy. He's a young father, he has like a two-year-old daughter, and um, and it's very unusual to have a garden club president, that's a guy, let alone. A, an electrician, so, you know, we're talking about this with the Pollinator Pathway Board of Directors yesterday, that um. We really need to get, there are a lot of men who are passionate about gardening and landscaping with natives and pollinators. And they just don't, yeah, express their, you know, passions as much as the women do. So if we have a guy like this in Trumbull, um, he wants to plant uh where the um. Uh, farmer's market, you know, the farmer's market is, there's that slope that goes up to the parking lot, there's a big slope area. Um, and that's owned by the nickel, the NIA, so um, he sees that as a huge demonstration garden for pollinators. Um, and he'd like to also have a plant, have a native plant sale there on that site as well. And put all kinds of signage and stuff like that, so, so it's a super visible location, uh, very passionate guy. Um, and that would be a cool demonstration site for Pollinator Pathway in the town. So we're gonna keep in touch with Josh Adams, and see if we can get a hook on him, wrangle him into working with us on stuffs.
Just a quick thing about the Pollinator Pathway, um, and now you probably heard about this yesterday. But one of the sign orders that I got in December was for the New York Power Authority up in Buffalo. They are in the process of converting lawn to native meadows and establishing native plant gardens across all of their facilities. So they are creating, creating native plant gardens in New York State, and they bought, I think it was eleven. Big Pollinator Pathway signs from us to go up all those locations. So I shared that with Donna and uh Louise at uh Pollinator Pathway, and let them know about it, because that's a big deal. I was so excited to hear that New York is doing that.
That is very cool, and was it, where, where in New York was it?
Well, they are located in Buffalo, the New York Power Authority, and she said that they are going across the state in the next year. A slow, steady process, so lawn to native meadows is, it's on their to-do list, and I think of that. Now, I think this is really starting to catch on in, in unexpected ways, so it's very cool.
Yeah, that is awesome, that, that is great, um. Uh, okay, I needed to talk to you about signs anyway, um, soon to order signs to be shipped to Maine. Um, so anyway, we can talk about that, but that's very cool, yeah, alright, excellent.
Janet. Janet.
Hide my hand.
Oh, she's always so polite.
I always put my hand up and Pam.
And I'm always, and I'm always writing on a different screen, so I don't see it, so somebody else has to, to see people and wave them, hi Janet.
I, I just had a quick question, uh, and Pam referenced, you know, launching a thousand trees for Trumbull, and you know, how, how we're gonna make that public. My question is, how, how um is there, are there any references apart from in meetings like this? That um, that the project is public? Is it only in minutes of meetings, or is there any other announcement anywhere else? Um, on the town website or anything else, or is it not public knowledge, you know?
It was in the trouble times.
It was?
It was in the trouble times, but I don't know that we've put anything up on our website yet, have we, Mel?
No, no, and um Pam's working on the brochure now, editing that. Um, and so she had a great idea to make this brochure, the Thousand Trees for Trumbull. Um, launch brochure, um, and so being able to get it printed and sent out to many households. But um, yeah, to answer your question, we really haven't launched it publicly yet.
And does that mean that we can't re- refer to it? We should not refer to it yet, cause I have access to like four hundred plus households. And I don't know, I'm, you know, I'm gonna be writing something about um winter pruning for our community. And in the context, I would, you know, I don't know if I should mention it or shouldn't mention it, or.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I mentioned it, yeah, 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 it's been in the paper, but um, I think. Um, you're right, we could use another story.
Put in the brochure, and I said to draft now, but just like some, like a, not a mission statement, cause I think that's old-fashioned lingo. Even now, but just like, what is the program and how's it gonna roll out, and what's it gonna look like, short term, long term? But just like what is the program and how's it gonna roll out and what's it gonna look like short term, long term? So I think that we we wanna be able to explain that elevator pitch very, very, uh, concisely. In the brochure and then have it be further, uh, extrapolated on our website.
Yes, yep, we definitely need to do that, our next Conservation Commission meeting. February, uh, first. So hopefully we can get that brochure kind of voted on and approved by the commissioners and then. Get it printed and mailed.
Sounds good.
Oh, can I jump in?
Sure.
Um, I said, oh wait, I see April just put her hand up, are you talking about the trees, April? Cause I wanted to jump on something kind of related, but not really.
Yeah, I was gonna talk about trees.
Okay, go ahead first.
Okay, so I already reached out to, this is like good news for the school, so I reached out to. The student from Fairfield, Ryan Romeo. Came into Middlebrook last year. And did the tree presentation for all the fifth graders, so he's on board to present again to the district. The Trumbull Sustainable Youth Group is willing to help out and pitch hit because there's six elementary schools and that would be a lot for one young man. And so my next move is to reach out to Barletree Company, make sure that they're a go, which from my conversation and email chain with them last year is they would be. And then to just get, and then just to get the, um, board of that back on board, which, um. Sounds like it would be a go, um, as there's somebody who who is at Long Hill who is passionate about this as well. And it falls within the fifth grade curriculum, so it should be not, and not necessarily a no brainer, but I'm assuming it should be, um. A nice walk in the park again from last year, so that's in good news for all fifth graders to walk away with a tree to take home.
So that was, that program was, who is, who's Ryan Romeo?
Ryan Romeo is a Fairfield middle school student. Who reached out to me last year, who has a passion about trees and did a tree presentation. And we coordinated with the tree company to give us, um, free trees. And we had a pilot school, which was Middlebrook, so it was great.
Wow, nice.
Yeah, Mel got to meet him last year.
Cute guy and everybody loved, I loved the picture with everybody getting their little trees. Little seedlings, that's neat.
Yeah, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, awesome.
So was that, did you say they're trying to put something into the curriculum about it too, that works into the science curriculum or?
Yeah, it fits nicely within the science fifth grade curriculum. So, and it kind of falls right around Arbor Day, which is awesome. Um, so we're just hoping to stick with that and then it should be good to go.
Cool.
Excellent. Um, oh.
Alright, so, um, question, or did you wanna go, Mari?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in just along the lines of what, um, Mel was saying about, uh, Josh Adams. And what Janet was saying about, I thought you were just gonna say Janet about involving people in the community, I didn't know if we have on the agenda to talk about subgroups. Or if we want to kind of, um, at least designate subgroups and maybe, um, a person from Sustainable Trumbull, that would be the point of contact. Even if the group isn't necessarily doing an active project. Um, I just felt like after last, uh, meeting, I know, um, Marie has been interested in, uh, you know. Participating in various other people, um, we had a mom who wanted to help with composting at schools and it was like, we just didn't really have anything going for her, but. Um, I thought it might be a nice way to recruit, um, volunteers and just kind of have a little conversation, um. Amongst ourselves here about how we involve people, I just feel like when people reach out to me, I don't, if if there's nothing like immediate to direct them. They might sit on a meeting and then not really know what to do and, uh, lose interest, so.
Yeah, that's good, uh, I think that'd be good to put under, uh, goals, which is the last item I have on our agenda. Cause you've mentioned that before and I agree that, you know, we're getting so big at this point that, you know, having committees or subgroups or whatever you wanna call them would be. A really, uh, intelligent way to to try to do this, so. Um, yeah, so if we can hold off just a little bit and then talk about that. It sounds good, right? Um, yeah, cause on the agenda, we don't have too much before we get there, um. Uh, I have stuff, I don't even know if there's anything to discuss under webpage updates, revisions, we talked about. You know, putting stuff about Thousand Trees for Trumbull on there, um, anything else? On the webpage, your. Oh, there was, there was, it wasn't from last meeting, there was a thing from last meeting about, uh, I think putting like updating the names of the people. On the, on the team.
Thought that got done. Yeah, I can check too.
Okay, good, sorry, somebody else, so we have two hands still, Mary, Mary, Mari?
I'm sorry, I have to lower my hand here.
Okay. Um, no, I just, I just back to, um, uh, the Pollinator Pathway, I know we discussed. Last year, but then we just didn't, it was too late in the season. But it would be nice to get our, um, through Economic Development Commission, if they'd like to assist. To get out to some of our businesses and, you know, the same thing, they could buy a sign if they'd like to put it out that they're on the Pollinator Pathway, if they plant. Um, you know, pollinator friendly, like encourage them well in advance, uh, like that area in front of Franco Gianni's, which he never. I don't know if anybody noticed that, those two huge planters, they never got around to it this year. Um, they're just like dead stuff, but, you know, if you go to Echo, you've gotta watch out for the bees, they have so many. Friendly plantings out there and everything, so it just might be nice to, you know, it's a good way for us to highlight them as well, like, you know, stop by Echo, see their. You know, stop by Franco, stop by Mariana, you know, whatever it's gonna be. And then maybe they'll also support us with the signs, which are going back, you know, into the, uh, sustainable account, so. Um, just, you know, just a thought.
Well, maybe what we do is rather than asking the businesses to plant the planters, is we offer to plant the planters for them. And maybe we can get some help on the plants from Dave at Wakemans or maybe through another grower. And, uh, plant them ourselves and put up some sort of signage, the, the, the. The planter I put at Tate Rhodes Trailhead Parking Lot. Has been used for a garbage dump recently. Somebody tried to steal the sign and they broke it, so I've got plans to go back there, uh, early, early spring, replace the sign. And, uh, put more, uh, another couple of plants in there. Um, but I think that, you know, maybe it's that we just need to do it for them and offer our services, I don't know, like we. We've talked about this eight hundred times and I never remember the answer, do we have money? That we can buy the plants with or it's soil and stuff like that?
We, we have, uh, I'd have to look now and I haven't gotten the recent update from Maria. But we probably have a little over two thousand dollars.
Okay, I think I could get, um, I saw Ken Hallaby last week and we had it, we had money in the. Trumbull Land Trust account that we just closed, because the land trust doesn't exist anymore, um. So he was gonna contribute to the, the Thousand Trees Program, but I think he said he could have another thousand, maybe we could. Put that in Pollinator Pathway, um, which would be great, and then I I know Dave, uh, Dave Benjamin, he. He's put together some really beautiful pollinator pots, um, and so if he can do it. Uh, for us, you know, maybe at a wholesale price or something like that and.
We'll give him a plug on, on the sign or whatever we could.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, designed by, uh, you know, cause he's our only, uh. You know, our only nursery in town, so it would be great, we could give him a plug, definitely. Okay, cool. So I'll get, I'll see if I can get another thousand, um, uh, for the Pollinator Pathway.
Sure, sounds good. Okay, do you think there's, I don't know, Ralph, if you're, uh, tuned in here, the, um. Economic Development, Community Development Commission, uh, we've talked about a number of things, how we wanna, you know, talk with Rena about. Raising funds for this or getting businesses involved with something else, I don't know if. Uh, ECDC has, uh, if you have any thoughts on how the commission might participate in some of this?
And well, I'm still, oh, I'm still lobbying for, uh. A little, um, column inch of publicity in our economic, uh, development newsletter. And we can put anything we want in there. Um, I don't have an answer yet as to when the next publishing date is, it's supposed to be quarterly. So it should be sometime before the end of March. And, uh, you know, anything you wanna raise there, I'll suggest we put in. And, um, if somebody wants to attend one of our meetings and talk about. Raising funds from businesses, I'd be happy to set that up.
That sounds good, uh, yeah, let's think about that team, because there's a number of things I think we wanna, if we can get businesses involved. Uh, in some way that. Who, the, how many people get that, who, where does that letter go out to, that newsletter, Ralph, does that go out to all the local businesses or, uh, in town?
Well, it used to, it used to be electronic, we.
Okay.
Years ago, it was just paper, then we did an electronic newsletter and. And sent it out to anybody on Rena's mailing list that she thought would have an interest and we can go more broadly than that if you'd like. Or we can do both, we can have an electronic version and then we can put paper. Copies at the library and other, the town hall and other points of interest, the points of common context.
Gotcha.
I have a question about EDC.
Yeah. It's like ACDC, but it's easy.
Do we know if the, um, piece we created for the restaurants about cut, cut the cutlery, everyone out to restaurants?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that, say again?
Uh, we prepared something for the restaurants about cutting out the cutlery and ways to cut back on waste. And we sent it to Rena, but, and she said she would send it out, but I'm not sure if it ever went out, um, I sent an email asking and I never heard back, so I wasn't sure. If the restaurants actually got that.
Alright, I have not heard of that and have attended every meeting, so I'll find out and get back.
You want me to forward it to you, Ralph, would it be helpful to see it?
Yes, please.
Sounds good. Hope on that.
Would I backtrack a minute?
Sure.
Um, just to the, the question of, 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 um, Mel was talking about finding a thousand dollars. The Pollinator Pathway Grant is fairly broad, it's related to planting, but it includes any. Activities in the town that require or that we would like to use for planting, I don't know if you wanna keep that for trees now. Um, it's really up to you guys, but it is available for planting if you wanted to use any of that.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Sustainable or conservation, either one if you want.
Okay, that's great, that's good to know. Yeah, cause part of especially, you know, when, when we're trying to teach people about layering, planting in layers. Beyond the overstory, the middle story, the shrub layer and the ground covers, that's what's important, especially if you look at one of these. Um, Milwaukee forests, it's like all layers, and so that's kind of what your grant would cover. You know, and it's all pollinator stuff. Too, they're just meadows in the sky, that's what they call the forests. So thank you for that, Janet. For the reminder.
Um, is there any, let's see what I have here, um. Any, excuse me, uh, any other, uh, Trumbull Sustainable Youth Updates? Uh, Mari, you, you had mentioned a couple of things about food rescue, I think, and then. Or I don't know if that was even T S Y, but there was a few things, but is there any other T S Y stuff?
Uh, kind of, um, yeah, they're just getting ready, I guess the legislative session opened last week, was it, um? Like I lost a week here, um, so yeah, they're planning to gear up after, um, high school midterms, I think, to. Stay on top of everything and continue their social media outreach, um. And I think that's gonna be their big spring activity, um, and I think I mentioned before, the high school is starting some of the TerraCycle collections. They're pretty much ready to roll that out, uh, this semester, so.
How does, how does that work, I don't remember, I know you have to buy the box, but do you have to, do you have to ship back? Because one of the schools today for the, you know, uh, reduction of waste, they were talking about TerraCycle and chip bags and. You know, all of that that they're putting them in, but do you have to pay every time you ship it back or is the shipping free once you purchase the box?
Well, I think what they're gonna do is, um, collect under Sustainable Trumbull's recycling drive. And because we have an account, we have already gone through the process of applying, do you have to apply to each program in TerraCycle? So we don't, um, have, um, the ability to collect chip bags under Sustainable Trumbull. We can collect them and drop them off at a location that will collect them, um, but that is a paid program. So through this, like with the recycling drive, as you, as you probably are familiar, all of the things we collect are programs we've been accepted into. So if the school were to just start out on their own, they would either have to buy the box, like you're saying, and it would be one box that you could collect a whole bunch of. Uh, different items and pay to send that back, or they would have to go in and apply to each of those free programs and a lot of them have waiting lists. So, um, they were just going to, um, collect and then bring it to us basically at the recycling drive each month essentially. And consolidate all those items, so that was the, I think, the simplest way for them to get started, um. So we'll see how that goes. Otherwise, it would be a paid program and I'm wondering if that's an obstacle for other schools getting started. Cause like the chip bags are a huge thing for schools, right, so many kids eat chips, but, um, it is one of the paid programs, so.
Still can't get grants for those.
Alright, and let's see where we, um. See, we talked about the tree program, is there anything in the Cat's Pond Project, I have that on my list from, but. Maybe a couple of months ago, but is there anything on that, um? Mel or Pam?
So, um. We've been, Pam and I have been kind of working on the plan there and Don Watson, um, the plan. Of native plants along the buffer, so it has, um, it didn't go to inland wetland in January. Cause the meeting was canceled, so, um, the pla- the approval for the landscape plan will go to inland wetland in. February, so, um, we pretty much got the plan, um, ready to go, we just kinda have to. Do the plant list and then, uh, I think that's all we have to do there, but it's a very exciting opportunity, I hope they get, um. That project approved, cause it really would be. Pretty nice to the, and, and, and I'm just really, you know, grateful for the opportunity for us to. Really dive in and do the landscaping for that site, cause it's so sensitive, it's, you know, it's right in the middle of this bowl. So it's a great place for, um, native plants and signage as well.
Is this pre, um, are you waiting for the, uh, uh, i- is this like in totality or is this just along? The lake, so because of the drainage that needs to be done and then the building, once they get all the funding. Um, so is this the last step or is this something that is planned to happen before the building's even done, cause you're not, you're not. Doing the exterior of the building itself.
Um, yeah, there's no, uh, first of all, I guess there's no plans to remove any of the trees there. You know, there's a lot of big, big spruce that they're gonna protect, which is cool, um, but it is. The, basically, the, the first priority is the buffer along the edge of the pond. And then what George Wiles also wanted for the back of the parking lot area where the cliff comes down into the parking lot. Um, is to do a, a pollinator garden along the edge there. And, you know, based on what the soil is, I, and I don't know if water's running down off that ledge or not or where it goes, but, you know. It, it could become a pollinator rain garden, like along the edge of it, so that the idea is, you know, the only runoff that will come is from that parking lot. And to capture it, to capture and clean the water before it goes into the, um, pond and the storm drain. So.
I don't, but I think, what, are you asking Mary if it's part of the building project or it could, plantings happen without it?
Yes, I, it, I'm curious if it's, if it is, as I said, is, um, there's landscaping that'll get done along the pond itself. So that it doesn't have to wait for the construction phase and does it need to wait for the dredging to be done as well? Or is this, once the building is complete, dredging is done and then this, this aspect happens?
Yeah, yeah, will be after the, after the building's in and the dredging is done, cause there could be some disturbance from the dredging, yeah.
That's what I was thinking, okay.
So it'll be after all that, so part of what's being approved by inland wetland is, um, the septic plan. The new septic plan and this landscape plan. That's what apparently was required for approval, so.
Hope you know, thank you.
Um, it, there was something we, I failed to bring up and I can send you information on this, but um, Fairfield Pollinator Pathway and Connecticut Audubon and Aspetuck Land Trust have joined forces in this initiative um, in advance of migration and, and spring migration, and it's called Lights Out Connecticut. Um, so you know, as the birds and I guess butterflies come back along the coast, um, they're really impacted by the lights that are on our buildings. So Connecticut Audubon with uh, um, this group at Yale um, are, are promoting this Lights Out Connecticut initiative. And you know, it's very connected to our pollinators and um, and the birds. So uh, you know, there's just a couple of um, things that we could put on our website about this and how to, how to um, you know, reduce collisions with birds, how to turn, when to turn your lights out um, in, in advance of migration. So bird migration. So it's kind of interesting. It's an interesting project. So.
Yeah, there's a lot of light pollution you don't realize until you face it, but.
Yeah, for our first, for our first round of the um, silver applications, I had gotten a lot of brochures from um, the Lights Out group and I shared those with, I shared those with George. Um, and I can't remember, that terrible, I think we put it out at some of the libraries, you know, that was about, you know, a couple of years ago. So I can look to see if we, there's still any left on that as well. Um, but you know, that was one of the things George was talking about during the budget when more people, especially people coming from the city, used to all the lights and everybody wants another streetlight. And that was one of the things, you know, it's like trying to, you know, dark, dark skies are important also for another reason. So.
Yeah.
I think that'd be great.
We uh, we promoted Lights Out Connecticut in August on Sustainable Trumbull's Facebook page just to talk about turning off your lights at eleven PM and leaving them off until the morning uh, just to.
Lost you.
We lost Pam's voice.
Yeah, we lost you, Pam, momentarily.
We lost her light.
Oh.
We lost, we lost your audio, Pam, in the middle of your sentence.
So the timing for spring migration is April first to May thirty first. And fall migration is September first to November fifteenth. So there's two windows.
What was the first window? What was the first one?
From April first to May thirty first.
Okay, I saw April, May.
Yeah.
And then.
And then September first to November fifteenth. That's when the fall. Um, and there's all kinds of turn off spotlights, uh, dim interior lights, um, down shield exterior safety lighting, so down, down shot instead of up lighting, down lighting. You should use, uh, put outdoor lights on timers or sensors. Reduce lobby and atrium lighting, substitute strobe. But so Mary, our schools, I remember years ago, there was this controversy about our schools are lit up all night. Um, is that still an issue or do we have the lights go off automatically when no one's in the room?
They're supposed to go off automatically. Um, remember, we did that energy years and years ago where they switched that. But if you do go like, you know, if, if you go past the schools, a lot of times same because there's activities there till late and some of them um, or custodians are cleaning. But I've driven by like even like Middlebrook. And it's just, it's just so lit up and it's, it's, it's very, it's frustrating. So I don't know if they're all like that or not cuz I'm only on, you know, on my side. Um, and I'm really not out that late driving past schools. So, but April, April, May now.
Me neither. So yeah, I couldn't, I didn't know if it was still, was still an issue. But certainly, if we can do it during migration time, then that'll get them used to it.
Yeah, good idea. April had her hand up and Janet too.
I was just gonna say, I'm working in the school system, the lights do shut off when we're not in the rooms or even when we're in the rooms and we're not moving. Um, a certain amount of time, um, that does happen. But again, if the maintenance isn't at night, yeah, then they're being, you know, being cleaned.
Anyway, leave it on. Hey Janet?
No, I mean, I don't know. This isn't lights in school, but the lights are on um, at um, uh, Beach Memorial Park Pool. It's like, it's like Christmas all year round at night.
All night too.
Well, that may be a secure, I don't know, a security issue for the pool, but.
Yeah, that's why people leave a lot of lights on unfortunately.
So over the pool itself?
Yeah, it's, it's uh, it's town property lights are there. All night.
I mean, we've heard that about Tashua, um, but they're supposed to be on a time, like we're getting new lights up there. They're supposed to be on a timer. So that's, um, I don't know, I'm throwing that one to Cindy.
It's probably, it's probably a pool thing if you got them both, both pools, right?
Could be a safety thing, yeah.
Isn't the gate locked and? Right?
I mean, you can still sneak in and sue you for falling in the pool because it's dark.
I think Dimitri is pretty adamant.
Yeah. Yeah, it is what it is.
Yeah, it came up in another context and he's, he's pretty adamant.
Well, that makes sense if it's a safety related thing.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know if it was just a, they don't have a timer on it thing.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
So we wanna move, uh, we have a couple other items here, but important ones. So um, for a meeting schedule for next year, um, everybody had indicated that Tuesdays and Thursdays at four were okay. Um, but I'm not sure that there is Tuesdays or Thursdays better for some people. I think, Mari, you said Tuesdays weren't so good. Is Thursdays better for you, Mari, generally speaking?
Um, it really just depends on the week to be hon- I mean, the month, to be honest. So I wouldn't work around me. I'll do the best I can. I just had a thought that um, was four definitely better. I'm just thinking if we're inviting um, department heads from the meeting, they usually are finished working at four thirty. Would that pose an issue or for you, Cindy? Um, if we start at four, it's just a thought, but.
Well, it really depends on, on the schedule of the staff member because we have all different hours. I'm, I'm nine, I'm nine to six. Uh, someone else might be eight to five. So it's kind of hard to say, but.
We can catch him in the beginning part of the meeting if they want, you know, wanna leave early too.
That's, that's true. Yeah.
One other wrench to throw into the works is that it came up with Conservation Commission where someone was wondering if we should meet together either quarterly or more. So, and those meetings are evening meetings, so I don't know what you guys think about that. And this seems like there's a, a bit of overlap um, on certain initiatives, but wanted to throw that out there to see what you thought about meeting alongside or with um, folks from Conservation Commission a couple of times a year.
I guess if we can keep it short and to the point of whatever issues or, you know, if we have a meeting uh, between us that we focus on, anything that we're both working on and then. Unless we do the subgroups, cuz it's easy to get down the rabbit hole.
Yeah, unless we get to the subgroups. If we can get into subgroups and we can do trees and pollinator pathways.
Yeah, we could do that. Maybe have subgroup meetings from each group or something like that. That makes more sense.
Actually.
All right, well, that's good cuz that's our next agenda item, is committees and subgroups.
Okay, so one thing, Cindy, do you know if the Zoom, I know originally it was gonna run out through uh, you know, was that we were allowed to do it till a certain date and then that got extended? Are we gonna be running out of Zoom time?
No.
Okay.
No.
It's we never.
Yeah. I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a thing from now on.
Okay, cuz I know Dan had said there was a date and then we were able to extend and, okay.
Yeah, so, um, so each board or commission gets to decide for themselves uh, at any given meeting, whether they wanna meet um, in person or on Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
So you don't even, you know, you don't have to have a rule where your me- meetings are always on Zoom. You can, you can do whatever you decide is best.
Okay, great.
So is there, anybody have a preference? It looked like, like I said, Tuesday at four or Thursday at four. Does anybody really have a preference of either of those is better than the other?
Um, the only thing I would say is that as we get into spring, summer, I expect to be at the farmer's market at least a couple of times for either those reviews for Trumbull, Pollinator Pathway, uh, anything Sustainable Trumbull related.
And that was Thursday, that's a Thursday.
That's a Thursday and those, and it starts at four. So you know, if everybody's okay with Tuesdays as the alternate day, then Tuesdays it is.
Yeah, and uh, I mean, we don't even have to always be the second Thursday, like for example, uh, Pam's gonna be away in the early part of February. We could put off our meeting date till you get back.
Or live without me.
What's that?
Or live without me.
No, that we can't do that. That's not, that's not really a good option. When did you say you're coming back?
I will be back on the seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay, and we can have our meeting on the. Well, we wanna do Tu- you wanna say Tuesdays as a rule then? Tuesdays at four? Be our rule and we could pick second Tuesday or third Tuesday or one of those? What do you think? What do you, anybody prefer second or third Tuesday? Does it matter? You think? Well, we're gonna start, if we start on February twen- twenty first, after you get back, that's the third Tuesday. So we can just keep looking, zipping through the um, the calendar here, but I don't I don't see anything on the third Tuesday that is a uh, holiday. I would expect there would be either, so. If you want, we can do, do, you know, that's before Thanksgiving, but that's okay, third Tuesday, yeah. Wanna do that?
We wanna do every month or do we wanna do every other month? I just feel like we, I'm having a big meeting today cuz we haven't real, nobody was really here last month, but.
Yeah, there's always plenty to discuss and as I say, if we wanna have in- invite George or other people in, then it's hard to do it quarterly, I think, but I don't know.
I think we need to do monthly and yeah, if we break up into subgroups, those meetings will be tighter, more concise with one update, but.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, the way it works is the, the committee subgroup like prepares a report in advance, submits it and we all ideally uh, read the report ahead of time and, and this meeting then is much shorter. Um, because we've already covered a lot of the information, right? And then it's only action items. We're just sort of saying, thank you for the report we uh, included in the minutes of of the meeting and then we move on, you know? So, you know. It's easy to talk about stuff though, so. What do you think? Well, well, if we do third Tuesday, let's, let's, let's say third Tuesday at four.
Okay, that's good.
And I think we can do that for the, for the rest of the year. And then um, and then my last item and then is the, is our goals, which will include things. Maybe we could even talk about our goals by way of committees and subgroups, like figure out our goals and does that goal, for example, we wanna push uh, food scrap, composting or what have you, say that's a goal. Uh, would we have a committee subgroup just working on that or what we wanna do? So I guess, what do we wanna do? Let's, let's say real quick what our goals are in general, right? So who, who's got, uh, who's got one they really wanna put on here for goals for twenty?
Food scrap, food scrap is mine. I mean, it's the reason why you and I started talking about Sustainable Trumbull in two thousand nineteen. It's the reason why I'm here. So that's really top of my list is to get some sort of food scrap program started.
Yeah. Initiated, we'll say initiated, even if it's a pilot program, whatever it is, right? Maybe it's a pilot program. We'll see what it is. So what other, what are other goals do we have here? How about the Thousand Trees for Trumbull? I think that's obviously one, right?
Yeah. Expand Pollinator Pathway.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know if it's goals, but just like projects for the year. I mean, I feel like I'm at my um, kind of max, but I continue, plan to continue. Um, you know, strongly in for, running the recycling drive, uh, overseeing Trumbull Sustainable Youth and um, what else? Town cleanups. I mean, I guess those kind of all go together to some extent, but um, there's a lot of opportunity to recruit people to help out on those projects at least.
I think, yeah, I think that's another thing is, is recruitment. Right, just in general, right?
Yeah.
Maybe town cleanups, but we should put that on the agenda for next meeting. Because as some of you know, I was out today picking up litter and I think we need to have some an awareness campaign about litter in town. It's just over the top. It's disgusting. So for next meeting, we should talk about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pam, can you send me the rest of the, if you have those pictures just handy? I was just sending to somebody on Parks and Rec and I couldn't find your previous ones where you were showing all of your piles. And April, I know you had that one as well from when you were cleaning uh, where the new pickleball carts, courts are.
I can send you my pictures from, you know, cuz I've been doing big cleanups and filling up my front seat and so I have a lot of pictures, so I'll send you what I got.
That would be great.
And you ended up with uh, whipped cream all over your car. If I remember. Cuz it was frozen and then it defrosted in your car and then. No good deed goes.
That was, that was hideous.
I shouldn't laugh, but. Poor Pam.
Um, so do we wanna, all right, so we have, I have on the list here uh, food scraps, Thousand Trees, Pollinator Pathway, Recycling Drive, Town Cleanups, uh, Sustainable Youth and Recruiting New Volunteers. So I don't know how that all plays out into, let's say we wanted to create some committees or subgroups, um, who would wanna be on those groups and who would wanna, and what groups would we have? Would it be a separate one for each food scrap program? Would that be a separate subgroup?
Can I make a motion to discuss the subgroups next time?
Sure.
Just getting into five thirty, it's one o'clock.
All right, well, let's, let's think about it. Any, any, before we adjourn though, any, any final thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think we can make a Google form where people could fill out what they're interested in and kind of check it off. And then we have groups created without a whole lot of discussion. We save time.
Okay. Sounds good.
And I'd like to add just like community engagement from, you know, from the other departments, you know, and community. But for like when we're doing Pollinator Pathway, we, we, we kinda do it sometimes, then we run out of time. But like getting the library involved and same thing, you know, for Pollinator, putting out before that for the Thousand Trees, why is it so important? So you know, for youth type of a thing where they will promote some of the books, I can't remember her name that we'd met with a few times, Amara? Maybe?
Yeah, from the library.
Yes, and even same thing through TNAK, like you guys do so many great things that, that, you know, unless you have kids, you don't really know that they're happening. So just some of those kind of more tie-ins and as I said, with the restaurants and some businesses, just it, it just kind of builds a little more into the, the more knowledge base and different groups that we can touch upon, get more interest.
So I've got new volunteers and community outreach sort of lumped together there a little bit. Whether or not to belong there, but that's good, community outreach and yeah, like we're doing with ECDC for example, TNAK, so. All right, um, any other business, any final questions, thoughts, anything to add? All good? All right, well, thank you everyone for joining us and uh, see you in um, third Tuesday of February and have a nice, have a nice uh, trip to Costa Rica, Pam.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Where are you going?
Uh, where are we going? Do you know, we're going to the Pacific Coast.
Okay.
South of Tamaurindo to uh, Avila, uh, near Playa Avallana, which is.
Cool, sounds real nice. Yeah, it's a good.
There will be, there will be monkeys and there will be.
Yes, there'll be monkeys. All right, have a good night, everybody.
Kevin, are you gonna send that list to Patty or do you want me to?
List of?
The meetings.
Oh, um, I'll do it.
Okay, super.
All right.
See, it's nice to offer and have somebody else do it. Works, works well. Okay, thank you, everybody.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.